Rough crowd. Okay, good evening, everyone. I'm gonna go ahead and call to order the meeting of the City of Bloomington Council. And if we could have Madam Clerk call the role, please?
Councilmember Kearns here. Councilmember Bowlin.
Here.
Councilmember Motney.
Here.
Councilmember Danenberger.
Here.
Berger, hello. Uh, Councilmember Becker.
Here.
Councilmember Hendricks.
Here.
Councilmember Ward.
Here.
Councilmember Lee.
Here.
Councilmember Crumpler.
Here.
Mayor Millonway.
Here. And moving on to public comment, Madam Clerk, do we have any public comment?
We do. Um, first of all, you received an email earlier today from Alicia Henry by email. Uh, and then we have just one person registered, it'll be Jackie Byer, after you finish reading your statement.
Okay. Public comment is an opportunity for speakers to provide their views and feedback to the city council. It is also an opportunity for the city council to listen and hear diverse points of view, uh, to maximize the impact of public comment and show respect for the expression of our views. All speakers should maintain civility and focus on city issues. Speakers must identify themselves for the record, but are not required to give their address. Each speaker is given the floor for three minutes and the council does not respond or engage in debate. Any speaker that engages in threatening or disorderly behavior will be deemed out of order and their time seized. Lots of pressure on you, Jackie.
Hi, my name is Jackie Byer. Um, I'm just here to just take a few comments as the city is bringing in, um, wants input from the public about the streetscape. Um, you know, the pictures are beautiful in terms of what the streets will look like. The only wonder, you know, I just wonder, there's a lot of construction projects that with the state and I think, um, around the main street area as well as, um, the infrastructure underneath. Because you've talked about the system going on a hundred years old for the water and the sewer and, you know, possible lead pipes and things like that. So I want to make sure that, um, you're talking about and thinking about doing the underground infrastructure first before putting on any of the niceties on top. Um, there's like an old saying, maybe you've heard it or not, you can put lipstick on a pig, but it's still a pig. So, um, I just want to make sure that you're just not covering up, um, the stuff that needs to be done underground because you can put it all the, the nice stuff on top and you're gonna have to dig it all up again. So just for efficiency on costs. So that's all I have. Thanks.
Thank you. Uh, next item on the agenda is the consent agenda. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
I'll make that motion.
Okay, motion by Councilmember Hendricks. Okay, second by Councilmember Bowlin. And I'm doing that just listening to the voices. It's amazing. Um, are we doing a electronic? Okay.
All right, I'm gonna just call it. Councilmember Kearns?
Yes.
Councilmember Bowlin?
Yes.
Councilmember Motney?
Yes.
Councilmember Danenberger?
Yes.
Councilmember Becker?
Yes.
Councilmember Hendricks?
Aye.
Councilmember Ward?
Aye.
Councilmember Lee?
Yes.
Councilmember Crumpler?
Yes.
Okay, so the items passes are no names to announce. We're gonna move on to, uh, item five A on the regular agenda, which is a presentation of FY 2025 budget capital, uh, project as requested by the finance department. And I'm going to turn it over, uh, to City Manager, um, Gleason for some introductory remarks. Uh, we do have fifteen minutes, uh, of presentation. Uh, don't feel obliged to take all of those fifteen minutes. Um, and then we'll have city council discussion. And I'm gonna cut it down by executive order from ten minutes to one minute.
Thank you, Mayor, and Council, and to the community. Uh, following the schedule, uh, working towards, uh, budgeted option, uh, tentatively on April eighth. And again, our fiscal year is May one to April thirtieth. Uh, tonight, we're gonna talk capital projects. Uh, council's been prepped. Uh, staff involvement has been tremendous. It actually goes back to, uh, late summer as a start for us. And, um, the culmination is exactly, uh, you know, what we're seeing now. Uh, we have a proposed, uh, three hundred and thirty plus million dollar budget. And what's exciting about this is our capital projects, uh, is nearly ninety million dollars and that's about twenty-seven, twenty-eight percent. So it's something that, um, uh, we're trying to explain, communicate, uh, the needs and making sure that, uh, the community, uh, not just council, but the community is aware of what, uh, we're doing. Uh, this is a process that's been in place, uh, for the past several years. Scott Rathbun, our finance director, does an excellent job. I'm gonna turn the floor to Scott. Thanks.
Uh, thank you, City Manager Gleason, Mayor, Council. Um, this is the second of five, uh, budget presentations. I mentioned we'd be doing five last week, so more to come still. Um, a, a budget, as I mentioned last week, emphasizing public safety, streets and sidewalks, dependable infrastructure, clean water sewers, and public well-being. Uh, sound ci- city capital assets are, are fundamental in the delivery of those services. Uh, so tonight, the department heads in charge of the project, capital projects of nearly ninety million, as City Manager mentioned, manager mentioned, will be going through those in detail. Next slide, please. So, uh, this gives a comparison for the FY twenty twenty-four budget of sixty-nine point seven and the FY twenty-five of eighty-eight, uh, point five million. As, uh, City Manager mentioned, that's twenty-seven to twenty-eight percent of our, our, our citywide budget. So this is a, a major emphasis of our budget, has a very direct impact on our residents in the community. And that's what we're spending time on it tonight. Uh, as requested by council, we are showing, you know, there are projects that get rolled forward from year to year. So not all of that eighty-eight point five million is new projects, is related to new projects. So you can see in the far right column, we've added some information, uh, just to put in context, um, you know, the components of our budget and how things roll from year to year depending on, on the processes that we encounter. Next slide, please. So, without further ado, so to speak, um, we will begin, uh, the details of these capital projects. We'd like to start with the fire department's projects and introduce, uh, Fire Chief Corey Mathini and Deputy Chief Mike Hartwig.
Good evening. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, City Manager Gleason, like officials. Our privilege to stand in front of you tonight and talk a little bit about what we have going on at the fire station. Just real quick, I want you guys to flashback to, you know, a nice warm day in, in September, you know, and most of you, I think, almost everybody participated in Fire Ops One-on-One, which, uh, an event that was hosted in conjunction with local forty-nine. Um, if you remember, the main theme of that event was stations and staffing. I'm pleased to stand here and tell you that we've made some intentional effort with our recruiting team, with the Assistant Deputy City Manager Tyus, and also action that you guys approved to reduce some of the barriers. And we're sitting with sixty-five people on eligibility list. We're on track to hire fifteen of those people. Uh, April first, we go into an academy. So we've addressed some staffing, staffing issues. That's what Deputy Chief Hartwig, we're gonna hire to talk to you about tonight, is the station component. Um, this includes land acquisition for a new station, but also some needed, um, investment in our current stations to make sure that they're operational for years to come. We'll talk a little about the current situation where we're at. The National Fire Protection Agency, so we'd call it NFPA, has a standard number seventeen-ten that, uh, the goal's for most professional fire departments to be able to respond, a drive time of four minutes to, uh, calls for service ninety percent of the time. We look at our current stations, they are dispersed pretty well throughout the city. However, their current locations, we're only able to drive about fifty-five percent of the streets of the City of Bloomington in that four-minute catchment window. Um, so what we're trying to do now is look back at the numerous studies that we've had done over the last ten years. Each one of those have kind of emphasized and concluded that investment in a new fire stations, um, is needed. The studies also concluded that if we're going to build a station, the primary focus needs to be placing that station location that gets the most bang for our buck. And right now, that's kind of a central corridor that we're gonna call, or East Central, um, somewhere between our current headquarters station and number three station, which is close to the intersection of Hershey and Empire. It's important to note that Station One runs about forty-three percent of all the calls in the City of Bloomington. That's almost two to one for all the, the next busiest station. So ideally, putting that station in the appropriate location is gonna take some of the, the work off of our headquarters station, give them some relief, but also keep our station crews at Station Three in their house more often, not having to come across and cover. And that lets them be, um, also able to respond up in the Northeast, which is still a priority. You know, it's another important note on here is that the, the, the money budget amounts was based on a potential headquarters-type station for two fire apparatus, uh, an ambulance, and then administrative offices. Depending on where that location is located, that number could change if we end up having to scale down and put more of a station like we have at Station Four on South Morris Avenue by the zoo. So, uh, those numbers could be a little bit fluid and changed as we move forward. Additionally, a station on the Northeast side is still a priority. Well, we're not, we're not moving away from that is, and also we need to look at the West. As the city continues to expand, we gotta be putting ourselves in right, put forward to address these things in future fiscal years and, uh, be ready to meet the needs of our citizens. With that, I'll let Deputy Chief Hartwig talk about what we need to do with some of our existing stations.
Thank you. So as part of the, uh, studies that we completed, we also looked at the current stations. And number four station and our headquarters fire station, um, were deemed to be in good locations where we're at. Obviously, headquarters by the Call of I Am and then our number four station at seventeen oh five South Morris Avenue. Uh, prime location where it is that it can access the interstate and everything on that southwest side of the city. So when we found out that they were in the right locations, then we have to look at the maintenance and upkeep of them. Our headquarters fire station is, um, right at fifty years old. So there's been some, uh, minor maintenance and minor repairs over the years. Uh, but the current roof on that station's over twenty years old. We've had multiple leaks, uh, that we've been fighting. So, um, the proposal to, to put a replacement roof across that whole thing, um, puts us in the, in the right light to, uh, move forward in the future with that station. And from there, then we can move into the station and start making repairs, uh, and make it, um, uh, a better environment for the, the firemen that work there. Uh, our number four station, um, it's about thirty-three years old. That station, when originally built, was designed for three individuals. Uh, we currently house five there. And with the staffing changes of adding these fifteen, there's gonna be situations where we're gonna need to put a sixth person there. So we're already trying to look at how we can manage with what's currently there, um, in an already tight situation. So what the architectural fees here is looking at that station holistically in that it doesn't have a training room. It doesn't have, uh, a dedicated office, um, that we can do our EMS reports and, and maintain the HIPAA compliance. It also looks at the bedroom, which is an open dormitory-style bedroom, uh, to try to make some privacy in there as we diversify our workforce and create another environment for a workout facility as we emphasize, uh, physical fitness and health for the firefighters. So again, this is just the architectural fees, um, portion of it this year that we design and figure out exactly what the needs are. And then in, in, uh, coming years, we'll look at the actual build-out of that. Um, but again, that station, uh, thirty-three years old, we're looking at making that change that'll make that station, um, feasible for the next twenty to thirty years into the future.
Thank you, chiefs. So next up, we'll have, uh, Director of Entertainment and Cultural Arts, Anthony Nussland, uh, discuss the BCPA, uh, capital projects.
Thank you, Mayor, uh, City Manager Gleason and Council. Uh, three projects coming forward. The first one being the roof at the BCPA, um, in a hundred-year-old building. Obviously, leaks are good nowhere, but a hundred-year-old building, uh, they're even worse. Uh, we have six sections of roof right now. All six of them are in need of repair. Um, we've had in the last eighteen months over fifteen thousand dollars of basically patchwork. And at this point, it's just not keeping up with what the building needs. Um, we have, even have some concerns with, uh, leaks over the stage area and with lighting, curtains, um, sound system. Obviously, that can do a lot more damage if it's not fixed. Um, so the roofing companies we've been using have recommended that we have to go to a roof replacement. Their, uh, temporary fixes are no longer gonna work. Uh, for the HVAC unit, uh, the facility has three units, two smaller units and a larger unit. The larger unit was installed in two thousand and six. Uh, of the two smaller units, we had to take one out of service eighteen months ago, uh, as it was no longer repairable. And we're using that one, uh, as parts to keep the other one going. Uh, so we're running about seventy, seventy-five percent capacity. Um, winter, we're not having any issues, but summer shows, weddings, uh, the, the system just cannot keep up, uh, with the heat load. Uh, so this would replace the smaller unit, uh, get us back up to where we're running at nearly a hundred percent capacity so that we can have the full confidence, uh, when we do rent, rentals during the summer and weddings, uh, that we'll be able to manage the events. Um, lastly, stairs and awning. Um, so as we said earlier, this is the stairs and the awning on the north side of the building. This is where, uh, talents and renters come in. It's a metal staircase. It's rusting. It's starting to come away from the building, uh, to the point where, you know, we have to shave the door for it to open now. It's just, it just needs repair. Um, and as we're doing that, we'd like to add an awning, uh, for two reasons. One, to help keep those stairs, uh, with a longer life, and two, so that when people enter the building there, they're not getting rained on. Um, if acts have done their, their hair and makeup out in their bus when they come in, they want a place where they can go and not be, uh, affected by the weather. So those are our three projects.
Thank you, Anthony. Uh, next up, we're gonna have the Director of Parks and Recreation, which includes the golf fund, Eric Veal.
Thank you, Scott, Mayor, Council, City Manager. Uh, we'll start with the Park Dedication Fund. These are funds that we already hold. And we would like to allocate, uh, for a feasibility study for Miller Park, a potential rejuvenation where we have identified there's a lot of, uh, deferred maintenance needs that we need to start with. And the roads curb and gutter are one of the most expensive ones. So we would like to work with a professional company to work and, uh, meet with the public and get their input and see what their priorities are as well. Uh, number two under park dedication would be to address AZA concerns. Right now, if you're not aware, we're under provisional status at our Miller Park Zoo. And we look forward to getting, um, our regular, uh, status this fall. But to do that, we have a lot of deferred maintenance of the Association of Zoos and Aquariums has come in, uh, through their accreditation process and helped us identify what those are. And we're working feverishly to get those done. Uh, regarding golf, we're not asking for a lot this year, but what we're asking for is hopefully gonna be a decrease. And what we'll ask for in the future, if we, uh, get this study done, uh, the modern standards do not have golf cart paths from tee to green anymore. And in doing so, that means less paths. So we'd like a professional design and construction golf company to come in and identify that for us. Next page. Unforeseen major repairs. Unfortunately, we've had some catastrophic failures this year, one being the McGraw Fountain. And, uh, we have used a lot of the funds for this year for that. So that's an example of why we're asking for that again next year. North Point Playground and White Oak North. Uh, North Point is an intergovernmental agreement with Unit Five. And so they have identified that they wanted that replaced, and it was in, within our, uh, replacement schedule for this year. Uh, with a discount and rebate grant that we get through the Playground Association, we, um, would like to add in another playground in White Oak North. Um, that was at a automatic request and, uh, from a citizen. And, uh, we think we can do that if those two things come to fruition. Sister Cities Wall Cap, um, that is through the Sister Cities Committee that the mayors have worked with in the past, and I believe still do. Uh, when that was created, it was built in concrete as opposed to a different type such as marble or granite. And it has, uh, deteriorated and faded. And so they would like that put back to the condition it should be in. Miller Park Shade Structure, we'll thank the mayor for this one a little bit. Um, he is, uh, championing in this one. Uh, but he is right. Uh, we are now doing more city events like, uh, Juneteenth than those out there. And our bandstand does not have shade over it. So we would like to do that while we're doing the feasibility study to see about a potential new bandstand option here's down the road. Lincoln Leisure Center, Jim Painting, uh, we were gonna try and do that this year, but the fact of the matter is, we realize, and we hope in the future, you're talking about tuck pointing, that you'll pass that so that we can enclose the envelope of the building so it doesn't leak through the walls and affect the paint that we want to put on it. Route sixty-six trail, um, this is another intergovernmental agreement with Normal and McLean. It was a cost-share ITEP tourism program that started when the trail began. We are still working with them to pay our share to them out in the county. Three more trail resurfacing. Um, these are all important. Uh, one of them was identified from a resident who fell. We fixed that at that time, but we realized there was more needs in those areas. So we're gonna, um, come to, uh, a better surface for these three different areas in Bloomington. Uh, Miller Park Zoo Master Plan, this is in addition to the feasibility study for Miller Park itself. Um, as we've gone through this AZA process, we have identified that the current Mr. Master Plan is out of date. And with a new transition in leadership and direction that we're going, um, this will also help us with the, uh, Miller Park Zoological Society and the Ewing Zoo Foundation as they help raise funds for the zoo outside of just city dollars. Uh, addition of the Wolf Habitat Perimeter Gates, this is more of a maintenance thing, but it happens to be in a higher price range. So we put that on there, um, as that's important, how we, um, not take care of the animals, but how we service, um, our needs to get in and out. Uh, Katofer Building, this goes back to the AZA again. This one, though, even though it says seven hundred and fifty thousand, is actually funded and approved by IDNR. We do the work first and then we get, um, reimbursed for that one. Then the next one after that is Katofer Roof and HVAC Replacement. That's an addition to that grant. But the good news is, if we replace this outdated, um, system, it will be more efficient and effective going forward with a new system. And this is a system where it's not only about the human beings that are going to visit the animals, it's about the animals that live there twenty-four, seven. Dog Park in Ewing, that would be our first dog park in Bloomington, Illinois. Um, it's a park that's already highly used by darks, dogs, and it's centrally located. So it made sense to us. And the tennis courts at BHS, we have funds in there as we have an intergovernmental agreement with District Eighty-seven. And we are obligated to replace things at a recreational level, which we plan to do. And, uh, District Eighty-seven might even choose to upgrade those, but we're in talks with them to see how it, um, will come to fruition. Thank you, Scott.
Thank you, Eric. Uh, next up, we're gonna transition to, uh, public work. So first up for that division or area of the city is the Director of Operations and Engineering Services, Kevin Cote.
Thank you. Uh, starting off with the State Motor Fuel Tax, uh, we have Fox Creek Road, which, uh, is familiar to everybody. It's a re-budget for next year. Uh, where we're at with that is we're, uh, uh, working on land acquisition and, and still negotiating with the railroad. There's some changes the railroad wants and some things that landowners want. So we're re-engaging with the, uh, engineers. And we'll be bringing something to you shortly for, uh, a contract amendment with that. Uh, we've also reached out to the ICC to get a time extension to complete construction and also, uh, uh, increase in funding from the Great Crossing Protection Fund as, uh, you know, costs have increased over time. Uh, so we're hoping that, uh, we can get everything wrapped up with that to bid maybe, uh, later this year with, uh, construction, hopefully to start, uh, next year. The next thing is, uh, the street lighting charges, half a million dollars. This is something we've been doing for a number of years. Um, yeah, to use, uh, the motor fuel tax money to help pay for, uh, Corn Belt and Ameren's street lighting charges. Uh, next project, Hamilton Road is one that's familiar as well. Uh, we're, uh, progressing on that. We're down to, uh, four properties. We have to finalize the land acquisition. And then, uh, we just filed the ICC petition to get the ICC order. We've had a status hearing with the ICC on it, um, and, and we're, uh, trying to finish out the railroad negotiations along with the ICC order. Uh, we're hopeful to get that, uh, bid, out to bid, um, later this summer. And then, uh, Jersey Avenue Bridge Replacement, that's a project that, uh, has been designed for the most part, but there is another piece that we need to do with a water main that conflicts, uh, a retaining wall. And so there's a little extra engineering that needs to be done there. So that's what that piece is. Next slide. With the facilities, uh, we have, uh, unforeseen major facility repairs. This is a catch-all that we use, uh, every year in different, uh, ways, um, from repairing some stuff with the Market Street Deck, uh, to issues with the police station and, and some, uh, problems with the, uh, sprinkler system a few years ago. Uh, so that's just a, a nominal amount to, uh, basically help with any issues that come up during the year. EV charging installations, uh, we've worked this, this year to do, um, EV study and solar study. Uh, this, this is actually dollars being budgeted to actually do, uh, installation of some EV charging stations, including for the city, uh, probably in, in the Lincoln Deck as the city acquires more, uh, hy- plug-in hybrids and electric vehicles in the future. Uh, we'll need those charging stations just to keep our vehicles charged and also looking to, uh, you know, potential public, uh, stations that, uh, there are a lot of, uh, grants and, and so forth, matching grants that are available. So we'll be looking at that as well for, for some, uh, potential public. And then the Police Department HVAC improvements, uh, that is for, uh, issues with the Police Department. Um, there are places where there's, uh, drips in the ceiling because condensation on the HVAC equipment and also issues where the elevator goes from, uh, the lower levels of the parking deck, uh, into a air, uh, heated and cooled building. And there's, uh, some condensation issues there. So this is some improvements to help, uh, with addressing those issues that have been, uh, going on for a long time. With the parking system, we're looking at, uh, for, uh, the, um, Lincoln Deck and also for the Arena Ice Center Deck, uh, insta- installation of security cameras. We've had issues in the decks with, uh, homeless people and, and people that have caused vandalism in the, in the stairwells and other places. So this would be to help improve security in those two decks. And then the Butler and Douglas Lot Improvements, uh, nominal amount to, uh, repair those two lots that are very important at both ends of the downtown. One, the Butler serves, uh, the arena and, uh, that end of the downtown. And then Douglas serves the BCPA along with that end of the downtown. And both are in need of, uh, some help, uh, and, and restriping. And, um, so that's what that hundred thousand is for. Next slide, please. With the capital projects, uh, we have first off the Grove on Kickapoo Creek subdivision pavement oversizing. This would be through the ninth addition, which is, uh, just to the north of, uh, what's under construction today. Uh, this area was recently annexed by the council at a recent meeting. Uh, there'll be a component besides the pavement oversizing. Uh, when we get to the water, there'll be a component for the water main oversizing as well. This is, uh, something that's part of the annexation agreement, uh, and it's to pay for, uh, pavement that's wider and thicker since Kickapoo Creek Road is an arterial road, not just a residential road. The, uh, Empire Street Colton and Avenue, uh, Colton Avenue Culvert Design. This is a culvert over by the Bloomington Junior High that runs underneath the road diagonally. Uh, the, uh, daylights where the, where the creek is paved on the, uh, northwest corner there at, uh, Empire and Colton. That culvert is in need of some, uh, repairs before the state gets there. As you know, the state has, uh, the Illinois Route Nine projects underway, the first one's starting on the west end of Bloomington. But they'll be here in a few years, and we want to make sure that whatever repairs are needed, that we get those designed and done before the state gets there. Wiley and Market, uh, or Maple Hill Road, uh, intersection improvement. Uh, this is, uh, construction dollars for a two hundred thousand dollar DCO matching grant. This is to, uh, help improve the intersection with, uh, some, some repairs, but also, uh, crosswalks and ADA and sidewalk, uh, improvements. As, as you know, there's a new Aldies out there and some other development going on. And so this improves that area to make it more accessible for pedestrians and, and, uh, better for automobiles with an additional left turn lane for Maple Hill Road. Hershey and Hamilton Road Trail and the Ireland Grove Sidewalk, this is, uh, in the area out by Brookridge Apartments. There's trail on the north side of Brookridge Apartments that ends right now on the, on the west side of Hershey. This would be, uh, a DCO grant to help us get that trail extended along the west side of Hershey down to the north side of Hamilton and connect up with the trail where it exists, uh, by State Farm. And then the Ireland Grove Sidewalk is to fill in some gaps between, uh, Hershey and the Veiled Church that, uh, are, are still incomplete in that area. So this, this completes, uh, that area out there for, uh, pedestrians, uh, accessibility along Ireland Grove Road. And then we have, uh, Constitution Trail, um, or I'm sorry, Route, Route sixty-six trail and Pepper Ridge Sidewalk Construction. This is another DCO grant, um, to connect the Route sixty-six trail where it stops at the corner of, uh, Veterans and Morris, right near the car wash. It, this would be to extend it to, to, um, Greenwood Avenue in order to complete a trail connection there. And, uh, and then the piece by Pepper Ridge is to complete a section of sidewalk along Danbury that would allow that subdivision, um, uh, for the, uh, kids walking to school access directly to the school, to the crosswalk going to Pepper Ridge Elementary. And then we have the Constitution Trail Extension Lincoln to Lafayette Design. This is a piece of Constitution Trail where it stops at Lincoln. This would be to extend it down to Lafayette, right near the metal recycling place. Uh, as, uh, Barry did that facility a few years back, they left a, a, a place for us to put a trail. They don't want to sell the city the land, but they are willing to provide a trail access easement. We just need to design and, and get the trail, uh, built through there. Uh, the next piece, uh, trail extension from Lafayette to Hamilton Road. This is a, a section that would extend that all the way down to Hamilton Road and tie in with the Hamilton Road Project. The Hamilton Road Project will have trail on the north side that will complete the, uh, east-west corridor. This would connect that trail to the north-south corridor, uh, along the Norfolk Southern Line. Uh, we've got the Phase One engineering done. We've got Phase Two engineering underway, uh, that- We've got Phase 2 engineering underway that positions us well to apply for an ITEP grant in the fall when we get to the next round of ITEP funding and puts us in a favorable light for that. The Airport and Cornelius Traffic Signal Improvements, this is near Central Catholic. And the intersection was originally planned for a signal someday. There's actually some handholds and conduit in place that was built when the road was constructed. This is a DCO grant as well with a 600,000 with a city share of 100,000 to provide for the design and construction of that traffic signal. Cornelius doesn't go all the way through yet, but will someday. And the traffic has been increasing. There is the Empire Business Park has been developing out slowly over time. Next slide, please. The Asphalt and Concrete Fund, this is very similar to prior years where we're looking at 10 million dollar program. This is just breaking out that allocation between different aspects of the program. So we have for the multi-year street and alley resurfacing program, which would include pavement preservation, 6.1 million. And then with something new this year, the Concrete Subdivision Repair Program. We've been focusing a lot on the asphalt, but there are concrete subdivisions that are also in need of attention. And so this would allocate part of it so that we can get some of those streets fixed up on the east side of Bloomington that are in disrepair with the concrete. The Sidewalk Repair Program, this is something we do every year. We have to as part of the resurfacing program to bring the crosswalks into proper ADA compliance along with the sidewalks mid-block that might have issues with them. This is mainly dealing with that, but it also deals with some other areas in the city that we've had complaints or requests for ADA accessibility. And then the Emergency Multi-Year Street Alley and Sidewalk Repairs. This is a bigger allocation than we've done in past years, but part of that is because there are so many issues that come up throughout the year that people bring to our attention. We want to be able to address those quickly. And also there's an aspect here with our pressure pave that we use this year in Eagle Ridge very successfully with a lot of compliments from the residents. We're looking to expand that program, but we also have to patch some areas before that pressure pave goes down. So this would also help with that. And then with the Arena Fund, this is a fairly small project, but important because the refrigerant in the HVAC units is an older style refrigerant. And this just allows us to swap that out so that we can keep these units and in the future be able to not have to pay the penalty for that old refrigerant. So, next slide. Sewer Fund, the sewer and stormwater kind of go hand in hand with a lot of these projects. The first one, though, is just for sewer, the multi-year sewer rehabilitation. We've been doing this for a number of years, $2 million. This program does everything from lining sewers to point repairs to televising sewers. And it's something that that we need to keep on top of as our sewer system ages. We have the advantage that we can look inside the pipes and see where repairs need to be done. We can also see what are good candidates for lining and lining has been very effective. It's extending the useful life of that sewer. The Locust Colton Project, a lot of people are familiar with this would be, you know, Phase 8. And we are looking at SRF loan, but there's also going to be a city share in this. We're hoping to, it's under design right now, hoping to bid that later next year and get construction going basically a year from now. The hydraulic modeling, this is a continuation. We've had hydraulic modeling done as part of the East Street Basin. We've also done some citywide modeling now, but this is a continuation of that citywide model to be able to look across the whole city and see what type of improvements we can do to help the other neighborhoods throughout the city. And you see that those, both the Locust Colton and the hydraulic modeling are split 50/50 between the Sewer Fund and the Stormwater Fund. So that's a quick overview of the Public Works Projects.
Thank you, Kevin. Another Public Works Division, though, is a Water Department. So we'll have the Water Department Director, Ed Andrews, come up and go through those projects, please.
Thanks, Scott. You'll note that the first five projects are cost share with Public Works, Fox Creek Road.
Next slide, please. Sorry.
Glad you caught that. So Fox Creek Road is mentioned, that's a cost share project with streets. What is, involves the water main is attached to the current bridge. When that's reconstructed, we'll reattach to the new bridge as well as take the opportunity to upgrade that main. Locust Colton, the next three projects are again cost share with streets on that for the water main portion. It's a good opportunity. We have a high concentration of lead services in there, so we pick up some additional bang for our buck participating in that round of project work. As mentioned earlier, Kevin's side of the equation is upsizing the pavement. We're also taking the opportunity to upsize water main to connect with other areas of town as we build out in that area. We also have budgeted our multi-year GIS. We did recently get a young college grad in our department for GIS services. But some of the more advanced components, we are still teamed with Cloud Point Services and we're one of a couple, three departments that cost share in that with our outsourced consultant. We budget annually for leak detection and we continue on with that program. Our crews are equipped with hydrophones and they're able to do so much in-house. But in some of the more challenging areas, we do bring in external assistance. Ongoing projects out at the water treatment plant is the lime grit removal system. We're starting on the design on that. The next three projects are ongoing cost share opportunities with McLean County Soil and Water Conservation District and IDNR brought one of those projects to you earlier this year. Continued planning, also the shoreline and stream erosion protection, that's riprap along the banks. And then watershed improvements, there's some buffering that we would do upstream in both both lakes, Evergreen and Bloomington to help knock down nitrates coming into the lake that impacts our water quality issues. Some of the more exciting things there are system-wide distribution, land act. This is all part of the rate increase that was approved tail end of last year that'll go into effect this year. So there's a land acquisition component from the I-55 Tank Farm to connect up with Normals right away. We would set that aside for that. Also, construction Prairie Vista Water Tank has been out on the street for two weeks now. So our intention is to bring that to council with tentative award. At least presented to council now, but approved in the next fiscal year under this budget. And then also Fort Jesse Water Main Improvements, there's some interconnect rework that we'll do up on that end in anticipation of the full build out of the system. And I did skip over water main improvements and replacements. So there's a million dollars of design that will help support the following year construction of six miles of water main replacement as we progress. And that'll be an every-year program now and for the next 70 years, according to the budget we put together on on water main replacement. I think I got them all, Scott.
Thank you, Ed. Next slide, please. So just to summarize, I went over these numbers last Monday night, but to break it down into categories of the 88.5 million, 43 million of that is going to some measure of streets and roads and sidewalks. So that's, you know, 33 million for the state motor fuel tax and 10 million for asphalt and concrete. And then a little over 34 million for water sewer, storm and water infrastructure and 11.4 million related to taking care of what we have, facility maintenance, quality of life, parks, rec and golf. Of the total 88.5 million, roughly 6.4 million is coming hopefully in the form of grants to fund those projects. I failed to mention that on the front end. So, you know, we take every opportunity we can to find additional funding sources for our projects. The exhibit in the budget book will include all the funding sources for these projects. And so really the emphasis, you know, as I mentioned, is to be good stewards of taxpayer funds. Put those funds to use for, to have the most direct impact on our residents' lives. So you can see that council schedule here, we have another budget update next week, proposed in 11th, public hearing on the 25th. And then as City Manager mentioned, hopefully the final budget adoption on April 8th. And then as all the presentations, this can be found on the city's website in the Finance Department's webpage, Budget FY 2025. So next slide, please. So that concludes the presentations, but the department heads are available for questions and comments from council.
All right, thank you very much, Scott. That was 35 minutes, I counted instead of 50. So, very good, thank you. Do we have any questions? So I see Councilmember Kearns and then Montney and then Ward.
I just have a couple of quick questions. One is for Anthony. I wasn't the one that originally asked this question, but I thought it was, I think it thought it'd be nice to say out loud again about the stairs that are going to be replaced and why there's no ADA component to that.
Yeah, since it is not an entrance for the public, there's an ADA entrance just to the south at a different door. So it does not need to be ADA compliant. It's only a load-in, load-out area. So that's why we didn't add the extra cost of ADA.
All right, thank you. And then my other question is for Jay. Or not Jay, sorry, about the zoo. And it occurred to me, it's that I had to Google what, after what AZA means and why it's important. You don't have to go into like a major description, but just to say it out loud, why it's important that we keep that accreditation.
So AZA is the governing body of zoos across North America and even beyond. And so we are accredited through them. It gives us access to actually more animals and more opportunities and environmental programming. We do a lot of educational programs over there. And so by being in their system, we have benefits that we wouldn't if we did not. And so you can run a zoo without being AZA accredited, but you can run a better zoo with being AZA accredited.
And that means that the animals that are in our care are protected under certain standards and things that are best practices in the zoo industry?
Correct, it's an accreditation process. There's rules, regulations, protocols for any zoo, but this one, they they have a more stringent process that we have to verify and prove that we're doing to this government governing body. And by doing so, it makes us a better zoo for the public and for the animals. And it has processes, like we use the Zoo Information Management System, which isn't necessarily their process, but through that and the tools that they can provide by being a member of the organization, it makes us a better zoo.
Thank you.
Councilwoman Wobbe?
Just one quick question for Scott and then my other questions are for Kevin. Would you mind repeating the numbers that you just shared? The summary numbers, starting with the investment in the streets and sidewalks and so forth?
Yeah, and that, I was trying to just provide some context, you know, because we have all these different funds and departments. So 43 million related to some form of streets and sidewalks. So that includes the $10 million for our asphalt and concrete fund and then the 33 million dollars for the state motor fuel tax. And then the next category would be for water sewer and stormwater infrastructure, and that's 34.1 million. And then the remaining is kind of the catch-all, 11.4 million. So that's really for all the facilities and parks and rec and golf, you know, the PD, fire department, et cetera.
Thank you. Kevin, I wanted to follow up and ask about the grant process and again, why Cornelius and Airport when the road is not yet a through street? And we've had a number of other intersections that people have inquired about the need for traffic control devices. Can you walk me through the process for earning that $600,000 grant for that 700,000 investment? Is that an intersection that we specifically asked for a grant for?
The, there's a number of DCO grants that have been earmarked for Bloomington by different legislators. And so what we're looking to do is to provide those public improvements in their different districts. And so that was one that was of interest for that district and that would fit with that grant.
And so other intersections that might have been brought to our attention from residents and so forth, were those intersections applied for as well? I'm trying to understand why that particular intersection was the one that we applied for.
Yeah, well, and that one, you know, like I said, when the intersection was originally designed, was anticipated to need traffic signals someday and was designed in such a way that it could use it. There's a few other intersections that are on our radar that people have asked about. And we're looking to, you know, do some preliminary design or feasibility studies with with some of those. For instance, Airport and Fort Jesse is one that's been brought up. And given the amount of land that's there, that's a possible roundabout location. And so we're going to do a feasibility study with a consultant to see what would those costs be to do a roundabout versus a traffic signal there. Another location in the future would be like Hershey and Fort Jesse as well. But given the school and all the people that use the park and the crossing of the road right there, that, you know, intersection at Cornelius and Airport made sense to staff.
Did you consider the intersection near Scribbles Learning Center where 143 little ones are dropped off and picked up in the same intervals twice a day and at an intersection that has grown significantly with commercial development that's in the same ward?
We're evaluating that intersection for other types of safety improvements. There's, with the Manual on Uniform Traffic Control Devices that we follow, it's a federal document, that would bind intersection does not meet warrants for traffic signals.
So what would it be that would allow the Cornelius intersection on a road that's not yet connected despite a pledge to do so about 20 years ago in a development agreement? What would make it qualify when the other intersection would not qualify?
I don't have the analysis in front of me, but I know one of the criteria for, you know, signal warrants also involves pedestrians and, you know, schools. And obviously there's a school right there and there's a lot of pedestrian traffic with the park and everything that's right there as well. Plus, you know, Airport Road, as well as G Road carries considerable traffic. But I, and I don't have the counts in front of me, so I can't say specifically to that. But I know that it was looked at by our traffic engineer.
And then early childhood education center, despite how large it is, it doesn't meet the same criteria as a school?
If they walk to school, yes, but they don't walk to school.
And we, at Central Catholic High School, we have people walking to school?
There are some from the neighborhood and there's also the park there, which, you know, that's a flagship park that a lot of people go to and, you know.
Right.
Yeah.
So thanks, I want to be respectful of the others' times. Just my last question is this, you know, in looking back at 2022 and looking at the amount of miles that we're going to pay for the spend that we're putting forth this year in this capital plan. Just to clarify with your comments, Scott, we're actually not increasing the amount we're spending on road maintenance, correct?
We're, right, the overall asphalt and concrete is 10 million, just like last year. We're just, how we use that to take care of the streets is a little different.
And we're spending more money, though, allocation toward emergency repairs because those calls seem to be coming in in a little bit of an increasing fashion, I think I heard you say?
Well, there's, yes, there's a combination of things there. Like I say, that contract allows us to mobilize contractors in different ways. And it can be everything from shoulder repairs like we've had on Fox Creek Road to guardrail repairs that are needed in different places. But it can also be, like I said, used for the pressure pave, which is a new tool that we tried this last year very successfully. Eagle Ridge, we got positive feedback. So we're just looking, hey, how can we, what tool of our different, you know, options to bid projects fits well to be able to get repairs done in different spots? And that that made sense to staff to, hey, let's let's add to that because we have this need for for those things. this need for, for those things. So.
The roads we're touching with repaving though, it's actually decreased in the last year from 1.9% to 1.7% of the total roads. Is that, is that a fair statement for that same spend? I think it's explainable with inflation. The point is we're spending the same amount, but we're actually doing about 10% less in terms of work year over year, in terms of roads repaved.
We'll, we'll have more to present on the roads. Council meeting in, in March, we're, you know, working on FY 25 and 26 programs and we'll have something to present with, you know, the statistics and everything for that.
Thank you, Kevin.
Yep.
Councilmember Ward?
Yeah, do I need to ask for some more time?
I'm happy to motion for more time.
Are you gonna?
How long would you like?
10?
I, I don't need 10 minutes. I think five.
Oh, okay. I was just thinking 10 just in case, so we don't have to ask again.
Sounds great. Councilmember Kearns?
Yes.
Councilmember Bowlin?
Yes.
Councilmember Montney?
Yes.
Councilmember Danenberger?
Yes.
Councilmember Becker?
Councilmember Hendricks?
Yes.
Councilmember Ward?
Aye.
Councilmember Lee?
Yes.
Councilmember Crumpler?
Yes.
Okay. Awesome. You have 10 minutes.
Thank you. Um, no, I want to, I want to say thank you for this presentation and for continued clarification on various points to all of you. I, I want to highlight a couple of things that, that I heard that I think people in Ward Seven should be very happy to hear about. In particular, the White Oak North Playground, I'd like to highlight that as, as a request actually that, that came probably a year and a half ago from a resident of the area who pointed out that there used to be a playground there and it, I think it burned down some decades ago and never was replaced. And so it's really exciting to see the, the kids of that neighborhood, many of whom are, are too small to be able to very comfortably walk all the way down to, to the south side of White Oak Park to get a playground there again. So I think people are pretty excited about that. I also want to, um, to highlight the work that, that is being proposed on, on Wiley and Maple Hill Road. That, that intersection I think is, is a great improvement to, to have that work done. And then I also just wanted to underscore what was said about the hydraulic modeling and the East Street Basin work, although not all of that, certainly the East Street Basin wasn't marked as citywide. The hydraulic modeling was marked as citywide. And I just want to, want to emphasize and correct me if I'm wrong, that both of those really do have an impact on everything downstream. And even though some of the neighborhoods that were affected pretty significantly by the storms in June of 2021 aren't specifically in the ward that the East Street Basin sits in, it doesn't mean that it's not going to have an impact on those areas that are downstream. So I, I just want to draw attention to that. And since I do have a minute or two longer, I want to put in a plug for two things. I heard several, several of the directors talking about roof replacements for the fire department, the BCPA, the zoo, and I really want to put in a plug for consideration of solar panels on the tops of those buildings. It, it feels like the right thing to do, even if it, if it doesn't generate enough electricity to completely run those buildings, it seems like even some hot water would be a savings and it would certainly be a benefit and, and would establish, I think, a, a, a model and an example for future projects. So I really hope that we can consider that. And then the other thing has to do with the area around White Oak Park and along White Oak. The connect, the possible connections between White Oak Park and O'Neill Park in terms of pedestrian traffic and connecting to Constitution Trail at some point. That's something that has, has also been talked about for decades. Apparently when Constitution Trail first went in, there was some, some talk about making a connection on the west side to, to O'Neill and White Oak and so forth. And so I'd just like to put in a plug for that for the future. Obviously it's not going to happen this year, but I saw lots of Constitution Trail connections. So I'd like to publicly say, can we please look at that for the future? Thank you.
Okay. Awesome. Well, it took four minutes. This was presentation only, so seeing no other questions, I think we're going to move on. Thank you very much, Scott. We're going to move on to item 5B for a presentation of the 2023 roadwork wrap-up. And I'm going to pass it on to Deputy City Manager Jeff Jurgens.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. This is something that the city manager started a couple of years ago. We've tweaked the format a little bit as we've done this in the past. We've, we've shown, you know, 80 pictures and, and read a list of streets. We've tried to, to, to switch up the format a little bit. So tonight we're going to present this in a video presentation. We also have kind of a supplemental written report that's already available on BloomingtonStreets.com. This actually gives, it gives some explanation about the type of improvement we did to the roadway, as well as a listing of the roads that, that received that type of improvement. So I will, would also just say this is a high level overview of the roadwork that we completed in 2023. This is calendar year 2023. We would have presented it a earlier, but due to some scheduling conflicts, we're now in February, but this is for calendar year 2023. As Kevin Cothee said, in a few months, we'll be back talking about more data analytics, about price comparisons and different things like that. But tonight we wanted to celebrate what we were able to accomplish in 2023. So with that, I'll turn to the video presentation.
The city of Bloomington has been grinding away and teams have successfully finished several resurfacing projects, transforming bumpy and worn out roads into sleek, durable surfaces with our slurry and chip sealing. When it comes to asphalt work, we're not cutting corners, we're resurfacing them. Your feedback matters and we're investing in quality road surfaces to ensure your journeys are not only smoother, but also longer lasting. But before we get into the specifics, in 2023, the city touched and improved the equivalent of approximately 36 lane miles of road. To put that into perspective, if we're looking up into the sky, that work would be as high as Mount Everest times seven. That's the equivalent of almost four lane miles of seal coat, 5.6 lane miles of pressure pave, over 13 lane miles of reclamite, and nearly 14 lane miles of general resurfacing. Airport Road, a critical route for many, underwent over $200,000 worth of street panel repairs led by the Public Works Department. But here's the twist, the workers at Roanoke Concrete Company were on strike and that made it tricky to get the concrete we needed in a timely manner. Despite those roadblocks, our team worked tirelessly to ensure that the project stayed on track. Speaking of concrete challenges, we didn't stop at Airport Road. Over on Summerfield, large concrete street panel replacements were installed at the entrance, enhancing both the aesthetics and durability of this neighborhood. Over on Clinton, our Sewer Cave In Crew got to work addressing crucial issues beneath the surface. It's not always glamorous work, but it's essential for maintaining a reliable and efficient sewer system. Our hot asphalt crew was on site on Mulberry, giving that area the attention it deserves. We're committed to providing durable and lasting solutions, even if it means a bit of disruption in the short term. We all know that with the hard Illinois winters, our roads also take a beating and suffer from potholes. In 2023, 754 potholes were reported to the city. Each of these were filled by city crews. Weather permitting, crews get out to repair potholes within two business days after being reported. To report a pothole, residents are encouraged to use the My Bloomington app. We understand road construction can be inconvenient, but it's important to focus on the long-term benefits. Whenever improvements are made, it contributes to the city's growth and ensures a more efficient and safer transportation network for years to come. With projects spanning across the city, we're making sure every neighborhood reaps the benefits. Check out our interactive map to see where the action is happening near you. For specific details on all of the roadwork completed in 2023, including a listing of all the streets that the city worked on and the type of work completed, please take a look at our 2023 Roadwork Wrap-Up Written Report at www.bloomingtonstreets.com. And the journey doesn't end here as we look forward to the road ahead. Your patience and understanding are appreciated as we continue to make upgrades. Stay tuned for more progress reports as we continue to build a better Bloomington, one project at a time.
Hey, all right. Also, before I turn it back to the city manager to see if he has any additional comments, just want to thank our contractors, Row Construction and H.G. Epple and Company for our asphalt resurfacing, George Gildner, who did our sidewalk work. Pavement preservation work was done by McLean County Asphalt for the seal coating, correct asphalt materials for the reclamite, and then Donaldson Construction Company did the high-pressure slurry seal. But really, our, our guys and ladies in Public Works do a lot of this work themselves and getting out there and repaving and fixing the potholes and, and doing a lot of the other work. So a lot of thanks to our own city crews and we are looking for them to do more. So we are, we are looking at equipment and training and different things like that so our own crews can start to get out there and touch even more of our, of our road network. So with that, City Manager Gleason, any additional comments?
Very brief, Jeff. Thank you. Appreciate the opportunity to tell this story to the community. Know that this is a pain point. We live in central Illinois, as Catherine shared in the video that we've talked about many times, but the fact that we live in central Illinois, that's not good enough. We need to find a way to do road repairs and road preservation better than what we've done before. Definitely have Mo's Ricky as the Director of Public Works to Jeff's point about the operational side and the possibilities to do more in '24. That day is here, but appreciate the chance to celebrate the partnerships that we have and to be able to communicate what we did in '23. Thank you.
Good. Thank you very much, City Manager Gleason and Jeff, for the work that you guys have done. I, I know you made a reference to staff wanting to do more, right? So I, I was kind of curious if you could, you know, elaborate a little bit. I have heard, you know, that, you know, staff can do more and actually do more to work themselves, but I.
Yeah, and I'll, I'll ask Kevin and Mo's can come up in case I say something wrong so they can correct me. But for example, on the potholes, we do have a good turnaround time. We've got two business days that we're typically able to turn around and, and fill a pothole. But it's with, with hot mix and it's, it's maybe not going to last the longest or, or be the prettiest. We're actually looking at equipment where we're able to go in and do a, a longer stretch of roadway to repair it with our own crews. So they're, they're looking at equipment that can do that type of work. We're also looking at having our crews sidewalks. We need to get on top of our sidewalks. And so we're also looking at having our public work crews, in addition to some of the emergency repair work that a contractor could do, we're looking at helping that budget as well, but maybe have our, our public works crews go out and strategically fix a sidewalk that becomes an issue within the town. Typically, when we're doing roadwork, we fix the sidewalk along with that planned roadwork. So this would be work that's kind of above and beyond that. And Director Ricky or, or Cothee, please feel free to pipe in and, and correct me or add to anything I said.
I think Deputy City Manager Jurgens did a great job of explaining most of that and summarizing it. I think a couple of things I would like to add to that is the fact that within our department, we have many skilled tradesmen and they do a fantastic job. If you come around and see some of the work they've done, it's top notch. The work they do lasts, so we want to be able to have our hands where we can on projects that we know will last and we won't have to come back and fix in a short amount of time. The other thing I'd talk about and Jeff did was the fact that we're looking at different equipment to help us be more efficient. We want to be high efficient, low drag, and that's one of the things we talk about in the department and that's one of the things we're looking to achieve. The other last thing I would talk about, if it's okay, is the fact that we would like to have the ability that when we see something and make an assessment and we see something that needs immediate attention, we want to be able to attend it right, attend to it right away. We would prefer not to have to wait or have to sit in the sidelines as perhaps it's not slated for that year. We would like to have the ability and the flexibility to come through and make those changes in a timely manner. I believe the public would appreciate that. I know that the people down at my department, they want to do that. They take great pride in what they do. Our Superintendent of Streets and Sewers and our Operations Manager are very well skilled, they're very efficient, they know the city's infrastructure, they make a great plan and they have the people under them that can take care of those plans they put forward to them. So we're excited about the possibilities this may afford us.
And one more question, because I don't get a chance to ask a lot of questions. Do you, what type of equipment are you talking about? What, how costly it is and that kind of thing?
Excuse me, can you repeat the question?
The equipment, what type of equipment are you talking about?
Sure. So the company we're currently looking at, we're looking at some currently that is about the neighborhood of $100,000. So that's not small change, but in this type of work, I don't think is an over expenditure for the work it could provide for us and the efficiency it can provide for us.
And I would just also add, so there's actually much money in this year's budget for that equipment. We've had a hard time with some of the different, you know, supply chain issues and things like that. We're trying to get up there and get a demo of it, make sure we're comfortable with it, but that is something that we have been exploring and, and want to finalize.
Okay. Awesome. Thank you. So I see Councilmember Crumpler, Councilmember Bowlin?
Sure. Thank you, Mayor. I have a question. I, I'm reading in the report about the pressure pave work and it says this system is more efficient and cost effective than many other pavement preservation options. And, and I'm just wondering, I know reclamite's been around for a while and I wonder, Kevin, probably for you, you know, how do you make the decision about which of these to use? I mean, you know, in terms of the roads in, in our community?
Yeah, they're really different tools in our toolbox. So reclamite is used the, the year we resurface because asphalt starts to age from, you know, as soon as it's put down, it starts to age. And the reclamite is a lighter oil that rejuvenates, keeps the pavement flexible and, and self-healing and waterproofs it. So we do reclamite in, in year one, when the roads resurfaced, and then we do it again and usually around year four or five. After that, the, the asphalt over time hardens and, and gets more cracks in it as it ages and we all see that. So the, the pressure pave comes into play maybe in, in year eight to 12 type of thing, where instead of letting the pavement, you know, crack and, and turn into a bunch of jigsaw puzzle pieces, if you will, it can help, you know, extend that pavement life even farther. It's a tool we haven't, hadn't used in Bloomington before last year. That was the first time we tried it. And Normal tried it as well, but there's other communities in central Illinois we checked out that have used it before and they all like it. Now, the pressure pave is a more expensive product. The, the, the price is, you know, probably eight, eight, eight or nine times what a reclamite treatment costs. But the reclamite just lets us get a little bit more out of the pavement. Pressure pave maybe gets it, gets it even further, right? So, and we've done some other things in the past years with C85, you might have heard of that. We've had more complaints about that. When it goes down, it tends to be more oily and sticky and also have more dust with it. We've used that extensively around Bloomington for about 10 years. Those streets that were treated with it, some of them have been resurfaced, but a lot of them are still in decent shape. So, but the, the pressure pave, the neighborhood, you know, thought it was a new overlay. I mean, so that, that product seems to be received a lot better than some of the other ones like a C85.
Thanks. Appreciate it.
Councilmember Bowlin?
Uh, yeah, I just want to say that I drive down West Oakland to MacArthur and there's been a lot of work done there and I definitely appreciate it. The curb sidewalk, the street I think was resurfaced a couple of years ago, so. resurfaced a couple of years ago, so that stretch in both directions is looking good. And the only other question, I have a question now, and that has to do with, it looks like chip seal was done on Greenwood from Lutz Road. Isn't that gravel, a gravel road?
No. Uh, and, and the, the chip seal, uh, you know, we use it on oil and chip roads. So, uh, there's a section of Greenwood, basically, uh, it, it, it's part of Lutz Road. So immediately west of where we stopped, you know, the Lutz Road, uh, was, was done from Morris all the way to Luther Oaks entrance. And then west of Luther Oaks entrance, it goes back to oil and chip, and then it ties into Greenwood and comes back around to the north, where, you know, it ties back into Hyde Loaf Drive, uh, by Trinity Lutheran School. So that section of Greenwood and that small section of Lutz that's left is an oil and chip road, and that's the part we, we did the, uh, chip seal.
So that's where, like, those single-family homes are?
There, there's three single-family homes there, right by Luther Oaks that they, Luther Oaks has been acquiring them, right? And then, um, there's a, a couple homes further up Greenwood, right by where it ties into Hyde Loaf. Hyde Loaf is a concrete street, you know, city street, but.
And that's off Morris?
Yeah, Hyde Loaf is that short section right in front of the, uh, school property. Um, it, it couldn't be named.
The one that has the arrow to, to?
Yeah.
To Luther Oaks, and then you get on some kinda gravel side. Yeah, okay, okay, I got it. Um. And, and as long as I'm asking a question about that area there, um, the people at Luther Oaks, the residents, were wondering what access would be when construction starts for those apartments off Morris? And?
Yeah, I mean, the, the apartment construction on Morris should not interfere with the road access at all, 'cause the apartments themselves will be accessed internally from, you know, the, the Wittenburg Woods subdivision.
Okay, okay. Thank you.
Okay, Councilmember Motney?
First of all, thank you very much. I love the questions that you're asking. I think it's great that you're thinking about, should we be insourcing more? How does that all lay out? And, you know, with insourcing or outsourcing, it makes sense with an S, if it makes sense with a C. So, you know, the, the business case and the analysis you do in that area should be very helpful to tell that story. With, when we look at these, um, fiscal year twenty-four, uh, completions, did we complete everything that was on the docket to be completed last year when we queued up, uh, the streets that we were intending to, um, resurface?
Some of those contracts are still open with streets to be finished yet. So there, there's, um, Epple, who, uh, had the, the FY twenty-three Phase Two contract. They were able to get, uh, Washington Street resurfaced, but not the speedhumps put back in yet. They were able to get a couple subdivision streets done, but they have quite a bit of work to come in and start up back up when the, uh, you know, weather permits the spring to finish out that. We also have the, uh, FY twenty-four Phase One contract that got started, but it's not finished yet either. So, there, there tends to be a lot of overlap between our fiscal year work and our calendar year work. And, and the work will all get done, but it may not be in exactly the timeframe that matches, you know, yeah.
Thanks. No, thanks for that. Um, the last is just a, a suggestion. Thank you for putting this together. I think it's very helpful and the improvements that we've seen in the level of analysis and the data that we're being provided. So thank you very much for that. Two suggestions that I would have, um, add trending year over year so that we can see, you know, that you're accomplishing more, um, you know, or what the facts are associated with that. And also connect this to the Pazer rating system so that we can understand whether or not we're making progress overall uh, to the baseline that, uh, Kevin provided us, I think, two or three years ago, when at that time, forty-two percent of the streets were rated fair or below. That'd be super helpful for all of us and for you guys, too, to tell the story there. So thank you.
Thank you both.
Mayor, if I could, just real quick, uh, I know a lot of people watch this, uh, at home and the public does, and I'd just like to, well, I have the opportunity to be in my soapbox. I would, uh, ask the general public out there, as they see our staff out on the roads and doing our work, especially during pothole season, if you would please be patient and be appreciative of the fact that these are, uh, men and women who need to go home to their families, uh, give them a wide berth. We have unfortunately had some impatient drivers, uh, and it hurts my heart when I hear the guys come back and have to tell me about the close calls they have. So I implore anyone out there, when they see our pothole crews, to please slow down and give them plenty of room. They're doing the work for you. And if anyone has any issues out there with, uh, how it works being done or where it's being done, or if it's inconveniencing you, I'd encourage you to call me directly, and I'll talk to you about it. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Very, very important message. Thank you. Really appreciate it. And look forward to seeing more out there. Thank you. Then we're gonna move on to the city managers' discussion.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Uh, have new hires from, uh, January for, uh, for quick, uh, introduction. A couple of Bloomington Police Department hires. Uh, we have Aaron, uh, new to the Police Department. Bowen, also to the Police Department. Uh, Jason was hired as a utility worker in facilities. Katerina is a new hire, uh, in legal. Next slide. And we have Nick, uh, with the Police Department, Nick Adderbury, uh, Adderbury. Uh, he's second-generation Bloomington police officer. Paige was hired in Leslie's Department, City Clerk. We have Cliff, uh, that's a facility supervisor, arts and entertainment, uh, joining Anthony's team. We have Joe that was hired as, uh, application support specialist in IT. Last slide on the new hires. And we have Lilian that was, uh, hired in finance, joining, uh, Scott's team. David is a zookeeper, joining Eric's team. Gina is a community enhancement inspector two, uh, in ECD. And then Holly was hired as support staff five in the Police Department. Next slide. Open house to share. Uh, next Monday night, uh, from four to five o'clock, uh, right here in, uh, right prior to the, uh, council meeting, uh, that starts an hour after that. But IDOT is going to come. We ask that, uh, the community joins us, uh, in this event from four to five o'clock to talk about the many projects, uh, that they're doing around the community. Truly a great partnership, uh, with IDOT. Uh, their presence in, uh, this region is noticed and recognized and, uh, would, uh, totally recommend everybody come out and be a part of this next Monday, four to five o'clock, right here before the, uh, council meeting. Thank you, Mayor.
Okay, thank you. With no executive session, and I'm gonna ask for a, uh, motion to adjourn.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Okay, motion by Councilmember Bowlin, second by?
Ward.
Okay, Councilmember Ward. All those in favor of city five by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye, okay, we'll adjourn. See you next Monday.